Audience, please take your seats and will the clerk please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Here.
Counselor Delasola?
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Here.
Counselor Mengen?
Here.
Counselor Matusky?
Here.
Counselor McKinnon?
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Here.
Counselor Napolitano?
Here.
Counselor Simonelli?
Here.
And President Hillen?
Here.
Eleven members present.
Will the audience please stand and join us in saluting the flag, pledging to the flag?
I quite believe that this is the flag of the United States and our area, and to the public which it stands. One motion about individual liberty and justice for all.
Our first hearing tonight is a public hearing, so I'll ask the clerk if he wouldn't please read the item one on the agenda.
Before we do that, may you accept me as your temporary clerk for the evening?
So moved. Move in second to accept Mrs. Canelio as our temporary clerk for the evening. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move you our temporary clerk.
Okay. Order number one is a public hearing to all parties interested in the petition for Light Tower Fiber Networks to Open Street located at 20 Broadway to provide internet service for a project located at 20 Broadway.
Anybody? Yes. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could, can we have the petitioner before us?
Yes. Will the petitioner please come forward? Yep. Good evening. Please state your name and address, please.
Right. Okay. Good evening. My name is Ryan McDonald from Access Engineering out of Westboro, Massachusetts, on behalf of Light Tower Fiber Networks. We're looking to petition a hundred-foot dig to deconstruction trailer at 20 Broadway for a sever construction for the purpose of providing internet service.
Committee members? Any questions? Counselor Matusky?
Excuse me. Thank you for being here this evening.
You're welcome.
Just curious about the location. Is this for the Wind Casino?
Yes, this is for the Wind Casino. It's actually a temporary circuit for the construction trailer. It's going to be two years, but temporarily.
So this gets them internet access?
Yes.
All the things they need to construct the project?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Delasola?
I'm all set. That was the same question I was going to ask. Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For you. Is this overhead wires or has this?
This will be done underground, placing one four-inch conduit.
So you're going to be digging in that area?
Yes, we're going to be coming out of National Grade Manhole 543, crossing the street approximately 100 feet to enter the property.
Okay. We just want to make sure that it's done the correct way and there's no issues or problems because Lower Broadway is highly trafficked?
Yep.
And done, do you have like a certain time when you're going to do it?
We're very flexible. Whatever you guys will allow, daytime, nighttime, preferably during the day.
I understand that it has to be done. That's not an issue or a problem. I just want to make sure that it doesn't happen to seven o'clock in the morning to hold up the traffic, you know, to go to work, so.
Whatever your stipulations are, we'll follow.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
There's a drawing being sent around. It'll get to you eventually, but Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. What's the total duration of the project?
Worst-case scenario, five days. You never know what you're going to get into once you open up the street, but that's probably the worst-case scenario. We'll shut down one lane to cross one side of the, you know, divided highway. One lane at a time we'll shut down and have a traffic detail there present as well.
So five days, how many hours per day do you think you'd be working on that?
Probably, I think, what, nine to 4:30? Does that work?
Nine to 4:30?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Rosa DeFlorio brought up a point about the traffic on Lower Broadway. And I just want to make sure that, are you sure one police officer, you know, that gets quite busy and people going to work in the morning? So you may want to consider having a couple because
Sure.
One there McDonald's to let people know that it's going to cut down to one lane. The traffic at the Rotary is backed up, you know, during rush hour in the morning. So you, I think that if, you know, if you're willing and if it's okay through the chair that you hire the appropriate number of police details. That's a, people on their way to work, even coming home rush hour.
Yep.
So I think you're going to need more than one policeman.
More than one.
Maybe three, you know? And there are pedestrians in that area, so it's a safety concern that I have, so.
Okay.
The more police that you hire, they do a good job and everything, so.
Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm really trying to make this easy and I don't want, I don't want to be difficult.
No, no problem.
We just don't want to run into a problem while you're doing this.
Sure.
I mean, 4:30, that traffic has already started, people coming home from work.
Okay.
Is there any possible way, instead of five days, it might take seven days, but to do it like say from 10 to 3?
Sure. We can do whatever you allow us to do. We can definitely do that.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm just thinking of the problems we're going to have with people coming home from work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. No, no, no. We've got to wait another thing, you know, so. And then Counselor McGlaughlin?
I concur wholeheartedly with my colleague from Ward Five and Counselor Lodge about the traffic. Is there a possibility of doing this overnight? Overnight so that they're completely out of the way of any traffic doing like 10 a.m., excuse me, 10 p.m. to 6 a.m. or whatever the case might be? And then you guys have no issues with the traffic and no additional details are going to be needed? And it's just a lot less congestion down there if you guys were able to do this overnight. Is that a possibility?
Yes. Yes.
It is. I would strongly recommend that we put that as the stipulation that we support this, but we would like to see the work hours be overnight from 10 p.m. to 6 a.m. or whatever we decide. But something of during the middle of the night because there's no residential neighborhood in that immediate area. It's sort of all commercial. So we won't really be impacting a lot of residents down there. So I think that that is most feasible at this point.
Excuse what the customary?
Just hold on. Everybody get a shot at that plan there. There's only three more of you, so. Are you interested in the plan? You want to see? You want to see the plan? Yeah, it's right there.
This is going to be, it's going to be a three-tiered project. You know, they're not going to be looking for their original, you know, real service for another two, two years or so. They have assets to provide diversity to the site, which we're still working on, the paperwork and stuff for that, too.
If there's no further questions, a motion was made in second to excuse the petition with the customary thanks. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
On the petition?
I second that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Motion made in second to have a public hearing. Any further discussion? You can go, sir. Okay. Don't leave the chambers though, yet. This is a public hearing. I'm going to ask three times, anyone that's in favor of this petition, please come forward, state your name and address and why you're in favor. Or if you just want to say your name and address, that's okay, too. So anyone in favor, in the audience, in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in favor of this petition? That's three times tonight to clear that part of the hearing closed. I'm now going to ask if there are people opposed to it. Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? And is there anyone opposed to this petition? Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is closed. Counselor McGlaughlin?
I'd like to make a motion of the work hours be decided this evening before we vote on this piece. So I'd make a motion that we put set hours of 10 p.m. to 6 a.m.
We have to close public participation first?
Well, we're not in public participation, yes?
I mean, close, uh, public hearing. I'm sorry.
I thought the chairman did. I apologize. Sorry, Counsel.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay. Motion made in second to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Counselor McGlaughlin?
I apologize for jumping the gun.
That's okay.
I would like to make an amendment to this and add the work hours of 10 p.m. to 6 a.m. for X amount of days, whatever they need.
That was 6 p.m., correct? 6:10 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
10 p.m. to 6 a.m. My colleague from Ward Five says that 9 to 5, 9 p.m. to 5 a.m. rather than 10 to 6, 9 p.m. to 5 a.m.
Okay. Motion made in second for that. I'll hold that for a second. On the motion, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only question I have, I think that it's definitely better to do it overnight. I'm not a professional and the only, I don't know if we can tailor it this way, but we could say propose for the hours between 9 and 5 unless one of the city service departments, whether it be the engineering department or Public Works thinks that they should be different hours. I don't, do we have anyone from that department we could ask?
I don't see anybody here, but I think that's not a bad idea.
Because I don't know if they have anything else planned at the same time or what's going to happen. Chances are 9, overnight 9 to 5 is going to work anyway. And I mean, if it turned into a problem, I guess we could always readdress it.
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, that area is very highly traveled by flammable material, no matter what time of day it is. We need at least three policemen on, I would hope, in that area. It is an industrial, excuse me, it is an industrial neighborhood, but there are quite a few residents also that may be inconvenienced in that particular area. So I would hopefully request that they hire at least three police details for that, that important area. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McKinnon? Can we have the police chief before us, please? Motion made in second to have the police chief before us. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Would the chief of police please come forward? We'll ask him how many. Well, thank you for being here. Name and address?
Good evening. Thank you.
Chief. Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sure. My name is Stephen A. Maisy, Police Chief of the City of Everett.
Okay. Counselor McKinnon? Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the chief. Chief, simple question. How many police officers do you feel should be doing the detail down there?
So normally under these circumstances, I'm glad you're asking the question as well, we would assess exactly what, you know, the work site and what he's doing exactly? And how it impacts time of day and all that and make a recommendation. Obviously, we want to ensure vehicular and pedestrian safety.
So we should direct it to your office?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll work with them. You got it.
If we could amend it to actually direct this to the chief of police office and for the number of offices that should be put on the detail down there. Okay. And I have a second on that. There was no second on the three police officers?
Well, whatever's up to him.
Okay. Through the chief. That's it. Okay. On the first motion of the hours of 9 p.m. to 5 a.m., it was motion made in seconded. There's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. It will be 9 to 5. The second motion was to refer this to the chief of police to have the, with the petitioner, to have the number of officers required for traffic duty. Motion's made in seconded. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Refer that also to the chief of police.
Fable action, yada.
Motion made for fable action?
Second.
Second with the amendments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by this is an order.
It's an order, Mr. President.
Please answer the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Mengen?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor, President Hillen?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero neas, you have passed the order.
Eleven yeas, zero neas, you have granted the petition. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'll have a, accept the motion.
Open public participation.
Okay. Motion made and seconded for public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do you have the, okay. We have a runner. She'll get right up there. We have a lot of people here. Okay. Okay. Just before we start the public participation, please try to remember that we only have 10 minutes for public participation. The council could advance that if they wanted to and please, there are no comments made about any counsel present, good or bad, just so we can keep that at a minimum, okay? So with that, Counselor Capone?
The only thing I would point out, I thought I heard you say there's a long list.
Yes, there is.
So if, the only thing that I would point out is if there are a lot of folks that are speaking on the same issue, depending on how many other people might be speaking about something different, you may want to have them appoint like a spokesperson.
Nope. Just four items. All different. Okay, so. Call the first person.
The first people are Paul and Irene Cadillo.
Would you please introduce yourself and your addresses to the council, please?
Irene Cadillo, 25 Roseville Avenue, Everett, Mass.
Oh, Paul Cadillo, 25 Roseville Avenue, Everett, Mass.
Okay. It's your show. Go right ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for seeing us and hearing our little problem that we have on Church Street. I know that most people are aware of it because I'm good at writing letters and sending emails. So obviously you bought your packet, which a lot you already know about because I've made several phone calls. First of all, I want to thank Fred at Rose, Caroline, she's the secretary over there, Dan Skerritt, who is not here, John Hanlon, Anthony, Rick Millie, he's from the DPW. I've been everywhere in the city, up to the chief of police to dropping off my messages to, I need help over there. The traffic situation, this is why we're here, is very dangerous. The church on the corner and the house on the corner is owned by First Baptist Church. I'm here to represent the Haitian community, the Spanish-speaking community that are our tenants, and the English-speaking community. Also, I stand for those that can. There are disabled people in our church. We have a blind member. We have a lady that just turned 100 years old. I have several handicapped children. We have three vans that house, that transport these people to our church. So in order to get to the church, it's become a nightmare with the change of the direction of the street. We were not even made aware when they were going, when the city did this, but that's neither here nor there. When it first happened, I went up to City Hall once a week, once a month. I went to the planning department. I spoke to Jay.
Monty.
Monty. He was very nice, no matter what complaint or situation. I even brought pictures. He even came to the church and we saw the capital waist go down the wrong way on the one-way. This morning I was at the church and the postman, he drove down the one-way too in front of my building along with the street sweeper. He went down the wrong way. I know for a fact that it was one of the members of my church, they would have got ticketed. As a matter of fact, for my Spanish community, six members got ticketed in one night when they decided to change the traffic on Webster Street. And they come on Wednesdays, they didn't see the little sign, six people got a ticket. They were afraid. There is a cultural and a language barrier there. They come to me, so again, I'm speaking for all these people. It is a hazard. I have a school coming up in June. Last year, my husband had to get safety vests for Astoria when the change was there. I don't like wearing the vest, but I do put it on for the children. It's not fear to get up at 7:30 in the morning to make sure my kids get in and at 4 o'clock to make sure they get out. One in every 12 cars goes the wrong way down where that change is at the island. We all know what I'm talking about, the island. I hope and pray that, and the whole church is praying right now, that you could address these problems as soon as possible. My school starts in June. Another problem is that the city of Everett decided to paint zebra stripes all in front of my driveway, a yellow line. I went to Jay, I told him it's a disgrace. Church has been there since 1906. I'm not going to go with the timeline. So it's so disrespectful. I love my church, been there 23 years. My husband and I are trustees there. It looks like a supermarket. I keep saying that. It's so hurtful. My husband works on that yard, go buy a church property. It looks beautiful. You look at the street, it's a disgrace. It might not affect some people, but it really is hurtful to us. I went last weekend, I talked to Rich at the DPW and he said, Irene, I wish I could help you, but he has to get the audits from somewhere else. So again, today, it's still a mess on the street. When they made the change and you have to come from Linden to go up in front of my church and then take a left onto the island, the island's cut the wrong way. So when I have to book limos, stretch limos, well, they can't make that turn. So the bride's in the backseat and the limo, the wedding's over, the bride's ready to go on honeymoon, but now the limo has to back up two or three times to make the curve. I don't know. I don't think most brides want to experience that. Wish that could be fixed. Again, with a funeral procession, as sad as it is, funerals go up there. So what are we supposed to do? Drive that casket back and forth to make that corner? That's what's happening. Please, please, you know, now I've been reaching out for help because the planning department really isn't listening to all these little problems. Maybe because we're a small church, but we're not. We house 700 people weekends. We're open seven days a week. We never close. Like God, we don't close. My oil man has a problem, so if he's coming up Broadway and he has to drop oil off for me, which is weekly because we're a big building, he has to back up in an inclement weather, he can't. So he has to go illegally down the street. I don't like it. I don't think you should do that, but if not, he'd never make it. I know we're out of time, but I just please wish that you would help us with the situation. Parking has also become a problem.
Yes. The city also took, when they did, when they did the zebra stripes and the zebra straight lines on the street and rewrote everything, they took three spots on Church Street. And then when you go across the island, they took four spots across the street between the driveways. We lost seven spots altogether. Now, usually what happens is if they, when they come with the van to drop the handicap, the other churches have vans that drop people off. They come down, they drop them off. Now to get down our driveway, they have to go around the island, down Webster Street, come back up Church Street to pull down the driveway because they made the one-way right at the driveway. And you can't take that right into the driveway. So now they have to go all the way around, back up to pull into the driveway. Now, to pick them up, they have to reverse. They have to come out, go across, go back around the island, come back around and pick them up. I mean, we're trying to work with everybody. We're trying to make it work and make it safe for people. It's more of a safety aspect than anything. It's aesthetics for the looks outside because it does all, you know, looks like a supermarket. No other churches in the city looks like that. Trying to make it safe, safe for the people to get to church, to do what they want to do, worship. But the way that's a one-way, the way, the way they made it, it's not working. I suggested that maybe they should send the island to the corner of Linden Street.
Sorry, Mr. Cadillo. We have to call you on time, okay? However, you, there is, Counselor McKinnon has an item on the counter, the number 28. You might want to stick around for that because it pertains to your petition, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Sorry we have to cut you off. Thank you.
The next speaker is Melinda Farmer.
Good evening.
Hi.
I really don't know where to start. It comes to what I have to say.
Just need to introduce yourself and tell us your address.
My name is Melinda Farmer. I am a commissioned missionary. I live in Everett, 17 County Road. I'm a disabled nurse.
Okay.
I am an evangelist and walk the streets of Everett, speak to the youth, to try to keep drugs off the street. I have been through a lot of, at my address, I was assaulted. I called a nigger. I, because of being a Christian and due to the fact that landlord is friends with the person that did, that took me, I did not fall through to press charges on that person. After that, people abused my kindness for weakness and I have been going through numerous incidents at this address. The landlord is friends with two people who live in that building. The other person lives in that building. She got relocated there because her husband assaulted her. By her own statement. Her husband got released from Nutwalk Jail. Her husband, this past November, made racial epithets in the hallway and then threatened me because he listened to his wife make a false statement. And he told me to back off. With that being said, because I know he already assaulted her by her admittance and the fact that he has a record for assault and discrimination with the police. And I am a survivor of abuse. I'm not, I'm a survivor of domestic abuse, rape, sex abuse as a child. So when he approached me in the hallway of the dwelling, I fled and I ran too. A church and, after that, I ended up staying, sleeping in a, I think it's called the Immaculate. The priest let me stay there. I went from there to the mayor's office. The mayor's office brought, sent a cab and brought me to A, B, C, D. Due to the fact, I have never been on the system, so my income, I'm disabled, but my income is above income technically to get any assistance. What my, what I'm upset with is the fact that I did seek help from the, from the police. And the two calls that I made for the first assault, the officer didn't show me his badge. I was highly disrespected. And the person, the person that assaulted me wasn't even asked to come outside the building. asked to come outside the building, and she was under the influence. Then, a year later, I deal with the other person who's relocated to my building. The party that is now, the person that made the racial epithets, that is a male, is related, is this brother to a political person that just got out of Norfolk for assaulting his wife. So, any woman in her right mind is going to run out of that building if you know that this man has assaulted his wife, which he's in love with. If he's gonna call you a racial slur and threaten you, you could do anything to me. And if you're not in fear of the police, you have to, you have to account of being disruptive. I feel so my, my rights are, are being violated in so many ways, and I need Steve Everett to stand up for me. I need somebody in this council to make the landlord accountable. I should be able to live in a safe dwelling.
Miss, you only have 30 seconds left, so.
All I'm asking is if somebody here can have the courage to stand for what is right, humanly right, me living in a dwelling, and not be in fear, be safe, and hold that landlord accountable, to have me be able to live in a safe dwelling. And that's not being done, and hasn't been done in the past two years. And I've tried to find a place to live. That landlord has been cited, even with Section 8, landlord did not even sign a lease until he, a lease went by for a year. There's been communication problems with, even with Section 8, with housing with this landlord. So, I'm asking humbly if somebody can take this on and help advocate for me as a human being, as someone that's disabled, and as a citizen.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. We have a next person?
This is our final speakers, it's Wendy Golini and Sean Coyle.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Sean Coyle, I live at 84 Foster Street, Everett, Mass.
Good evening, I'm Wendy Golini, I live at 45 Intons Street in Merle's, Massachusetts. Good evening. Again, we are here, back again, representing FSI Foundation for Autism, and we are here to speak about a matter that's on your agenda this evening. We actually just came to ourselves to come as FSI to publicly thank everyone here in this room, especially President Hanlon for putting together the subcommittee to address the issues and concern that we had around our race. Councilman McKinnon and Councilman Matusky, you are amazing in what you did in bringing everyone together in the room, especially the mayor who brought together the department heads, the chief of police, in which we had a fantastic dialogue, which all concerns were brought up in the matter of public safety and what was best for everyone and the wealth and health of our foundation and all the good work we're trying to do. And we're very happy, because, you know, we believe that the mayor himself just listened to everyone's concerns and the safety and, you know, the things that the police have on, on the agenda, you know, that all their safety falls on their shoulders, Everett's finest, and we know that they're gonna do a great job, but the part that the mayor saw and weighed the importance of what was best for the children and for the future of your children that are your citizens of Everett and the community. And we just wanted to say that, you know, we walked out of that meeting with the feeling of a partnership with the city of Everett and with all of you, and we're really excited, because we see that you see the vision, that, you know, the statistics are staggering of what is happening with autism and the financial impact that goes on there, that you're seeing and thinking outside the box and realizing the sooner and the earlier that we help families and children in integration and teach them to be great adults and also are considered atypical children that'll be alongside these citizens for years to come, to know that the financial benefit and, and just the moral benefit and everything in a whole is what it's gonna do. So, we are very excited. Saturday night is our pre-registration process party, which you're all invited to, and you know that. We have over 60 donations of raffles that have come in, and it's just pouring in, in the texts and phone calls that we got from your community when they found out that you embraced us and are helping us and, you know, making a partnership with us. And we just wanted to thank you, and the race is Sunday morning, and it's not too late to register, and we hope to see you all there, and we look forward to this, and this is just gonna get bigger and better, and we're gonna be able to do more great things for your children and the community. So, we just really needed to take that moment to let everybody know that the way you handled this and what you did for us and everybody involved was admirable. So, thank you to all, to our chief, to our department heads, to everyone here, and especially our fine mayor. We look forward to seeing you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll close the, accept the motion closed.
Accept the motion closed.
Motion made in second, closed, public participation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you have closed public participation. Counsel, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we suspend the rules and take item number 20?
Motion made in second, 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 take item number 20, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, item number 20 is now before you.
Item number 20, Mr. President, is a committee on community and business development report on order offered by Councilor John F. Hanlon as president to grant the petition for mechanical repair and auto body repair license for Rocco Vigorito Shop at 39 Line Street.
Accept the committee report and place on file, favorable action.
Second motion. Second to accept the committee motion and for favorable action, do I have a second? Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, so moved, you have granted the license.
It's an order, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, it's an order, we have to have a roll call.
Just give me one moment, please.
Good call, real.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Mengen.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
President Haley.
Yes.
Levin, yea, zero, nay, zero, pass the order.
The petition has been granted? Okay.
Item number 22.
Second.
Motion made in second, take item number 22, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, item 22 is before you.
Item number 22 is a resolution offered by Counselor Stephen Simonelli for the chief to, of police appear to update on some creative ways to help stop gun violence, as well as give an update on the MS-13 movement in Everett, and request the chief bring an update on all registered gun owners and that they be checked for any violations in the past two years, also to check them, to make sure they are all legally licensed with a written gun permit to carry.
Counselor Simonelli.
We'd like to invite Chief Maisy to the podium.
If, motion made in second, invite the chief before us, all in favor? Aye, chief, please.
Good evening.
Thanks again for joining us tonight. So, I know we cannot stop gun violence, but maybe we can control it by checking gun owners' criminal records in the past, if there is any. So, do you think that would help?
So, I'll say Massachusetts, we live in probably one of the best states in terms of vetting owners of, you know, our licensed owners of firearms. And we do do background checks, that's correct, we do mental health checks, criminal checks, and they're thoroughly screened, the fingerprints are sent in as well. And so, someone who fits the criteria to get a license will get the license, but once they get the license, if they're involved in any activity that would cause us to suspend their license, we take action. And on a regular basis, that happens in my office, where we are taking action, it then gets kicked into district court, and a decision's made by a judge if someone should get their license back or not. In many cases, people do not get their license back if they commit certain criminal acts or engage in certain behavior.
Also, is there anything that we can do as citizens to assist local and state police and to update people and groups of people with a history of violent crimes that, that may carry guns?
Well, we're obviously interested in people who unlawfully or illegally carrying firearms. That's, you know, people who lawfully can carry firearms are not usually our problem. It's people who are unlawfully carrying them, and those are the people that involve in criminal activity. So, we always, obviously welcome, anybody who has information on people committing crimes and carrying firearms, we'd love to know about it. The other thing is, we ask people to be responsible, who are lawful gun owners, to secure their weapons when they're not carrying them or using them. We recently, we're kicking off an initiative to get, everyone has to go through a safety course that goes through the licensing process. Now, when we're done with them, we're gonna give them more safety information, as well as a gun lock, at least for one firearm that they may, they have, just as a reminder to lock the weapons up when they're not in use.
Great, thanks. Also, kind of switching gears a bit, the MS-13 gang in Everett and other cities has been very quiet, quiet lately, partly due to the police gang unit that has been keeping a close watch on any of their movement. Are you aware of any planning that they may be doing in the near future as far as violence?
So, I really, I really don't like to give the spotlight to any particular criminal group, people involved in criminal street gangs. MS-13 is one of many gangs that do exist throughout, you know, Metro Boston and other parts of the country, but I like to say, we, we do, and I think an effective job of controlling their activities, and we're constantly monitoring people that we believe may be involved in gang activity. And again, if people have information that they believe someone is involved in a criminal street gang, there obviously has to be, it's not illegal to be involved in a gang, it's illegal to be involved in a gang that's committing criminal acts, we welcome information as well.
Thank you. So, are you aware of any MS-13 or any other gang members that are currently in our schools? And if so, what do you do to possibly identify those individuals?
I mean, so, you know, I can say this, the schools are a safe environment. We, if you don't know, we have offices assigned at the high school, the school resource officers, who are there as an extension of the staff to try to help them with any issues, especially if, if there was something that would cross over to criminal. One thing, you know, kids, teenagers being teenagers, but if something crosses the line to criminal behavior where they're, again, keep in mind, people that are involved in criminal street gangs is a very small percentage of young people, and in a city like ours, that's not a lot of people. So, we have a pretty good, pretty good idea of who's who, what they're involved in, in terms of if they are involved in a gang. And it's, again, not just one group, there's, there's other groups out there, but there's nothing that concerns me that we haven't, we haven't been able to work with other, other partners in the community to address.
And lastly, we are aware that recently there was known that there was a member of ISIS that was from Everett. Is there any possible connection between that and other violent street gangs like MS-13? The reason I ask is this is a very important issue, and it needs to be addressed now more than ever, whether we like it or not.
Sure. Offhand, no, no connection between those two groups of people. ISIS is an issue that's, you know, international, and, yeah, everybody's affected, including cities and towns like ours, so, but no, there's no connection between those two groups that we know of.
Thank you, no further questions for us. Is there any other questions from any other members of the council? Counsel McLaughlin.
Chief, could you tell us, what is our gang unit made up of as far as manpower, members and about our gang unit?
Well, we, we refer to, I mean, we refer to the group as Youth Services, and right now, we're trying to, what we'd only do is in this couple of summer months, we add offices to it. There's, there's three offices dedicated to working in youth service issues, but the plan's out to grow, grow that, and we reassign people usually during the warmer months to, to address youth-related issues, including gang activity.
And I know, again, you said you have resource officers in the high school, I know particularly know one of them who is doing a phenomenal job on a daily basis and really interacting with the kids at the high school level. So, I thank you for your efforts on that, and I apologize if I, if I asked a bad question.
You got it.
Any, any further questions? Custom, thanks, chief, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
On the resolution, Counsel Simonelli.
Motion is to refer to Chief Maisy to place on file and update council as needed.
Motion, motion was to, what was the motion? Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. Motion was made in second to refer to his, the chief of police. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred item 22 to the chief of police, Counsel Capone.
Mr. President, can we suspend item number 12?
Counsel Capone has the floor.
Can we take item number 28?
20.
Suspend the rules and take number 28.
28. Motion for, second, do I have a second? Take item 28?
Second.
Second, motion made in second, to take item 28 from the agenda. Any further, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of taking item 28, signify by saying aye. All opposed, no move. Item 28. Hold on, item 28?
Item number 28 is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon to have representatives from the First Baptist Church 50-52 Church Street come before the Government Operations, Public Safety and Public Service Committee to explain the conditions of the church parking for funerals, weddings, and Sunday services being affected by the one-way street and the future consideration for, to traffic flow. Invite Paul and Irene Cardillo from church to attend.
Counsel McKinnon. Thank you, Mr. President. What I'd like to do first is amend this by having the city council as a whole added to it. Okay. Motion made in second? Second somewhere? Second to have this amended so that says the council as a whole is sponsoring this, this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you've done that. Counsel McKinnon. The other amendment would be to have this go to, instead of Government Operations, go to the mayor's office, invite the engineer department, traffic division, PD, planning department. Hold on, traffic, after traffic, planning department. Finance? Okay. And the, the representatives from the church. And to actually have this onsite in the affected area, a meeting with them onsite at the affected area. Okay, that can be done. Just so I got it, mayor, engineer, traffic department, finance department, and church, did I miss any?
That's it. Planning department.
Planning. That's it? Okay, motion made in second, to refer the subject matter to the honor of the mayor, the engineering department, the traffic department, the finance department, and the representatives from the church, and the planning department to appear at a location, a date to be announced, and to discuss that, the problem at the Baptist Church, First Baptist Church. Any further discussions? Hearing, oh, yes, Counsel McLaughlin?
I, I support the idea, but are we breaking any sort of an open meeting law if a quorum meets at the church to discuss this matter, Mr. Chairman? Mr. President, excuse me.
No, no, we're not, because this is a continuation of this meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, yes, Counsel Napolitano.
Yes, and this is just for the information of the new councils on this year, on the, on the, this session. The very proposal that, that Mr. Cardillo had suggested was approved and sent by this council to the administration, which was to extend that island out to Linden Street, continue Church Street on a one-way fashion, and then have, have, have a clear division of where traffic turns on to. Webster Street and not affect, and not affect the change on Church Street. This council passed that, sent that recommendation to the administration a year and a half ago, and the end result was the mess that we've inherited down here. And I feel for them, because I take Church Street every morning on my way to work, and I'm constantly have people coming at me down on the one-way street. So, it's not, the solution that is there is a very dangerous situation, and now hearing that it also took parking away, it's creating additional inconvenience for that church, I mean, it's crazy. We send recommendations, and they fall on deaf ears, and changes are made that are not positive changes. So, I fully support this, and I think that this is, this does need to be revised. Let's spend a little money, let's get that island extended, let's make it a little safer environment.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion on the motion to refer and for a time certain?
The amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so.
Please suspend the rules and take items number 12.
Motion made in second to take item 12 from the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, Counsel DeFlorio?
Would you like me to read the piece, Mr. President?
Oh, sorry, yeah, read the piece first, yeah.
Item number 12 is a communication from Councilors Wayne Matusky and Counselors John Leo McKinnon regarding the autism race for FSI, confirming the root issues that have been resolved with the mayor, police chief Sergeant Hannan, and mayor's chief of staff. Race will start at 11:00 a.m. Sunday, May 1st, pre-registration is 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the rec. center, 47 Elm Street. Best wishes to the foundation and participants for spreading autism awareness.
Set the committee report, place on file.
Second.
And make a motion to refer back to sponsor.
Okay, motion made in second to. Mr. President on the motion? Accept report and to refer back to sponsor on the motion, Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank you for actually appointing Councilman McKinnon and myself to that subcommittee that was held last week with the chief of police, chief of staff O'Donnell, Mr. Hannan from the police department, detail department, and of course, the autism group, and of course, the mayor. The mayor was really open-minded on the whole affair and very excited that this worthy cause is going to be very successful. You know, I've been around a long time, since 1981, and this has to be one of the biggest learning experiences. You know, I left this building on that particular day, Mr. President, feeling good about Everett, the direction we're headed, how people can come together and solve issues. The mayor was outstanding, the autism group who are very committed to this cause, and it's going to be a successful event. But, this is how things are supposed to work out, and thanks to your insight in appointing Counsel McKinnon and myself, I really was impressed, and I did speak to many people about this. Everett is on, it's a move, we're going to change in the next few years, and it's events like this that show that we care about the residents that live here that need assistance. And I learnt a lot about road races that day. I mean, they even have to contact mass port to release balloons. So, I mean, you know, and notify all the businesses, the churches, there's christenings happening, there's so many different things, and of course, the Conley Center they're having their pasta dinner, and it was just an educational event for me. I mean, I've learnt a lot about road races, and I want to wish them the biggest success, but the biggest accolade should go to our mayor who actually opened the doors to make this all, this whole affair run smoothly and correctly and in safe conditions throughout the city.
Thank you.
So, my report to you, Mr. President, is it was a big success, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McKinnon?
I just want to say a couple of things. I want to congratulate everybody that come into an agreement on this, and it should be a great success. The pre-registration is from 8:00 to 11:00, May 1st, and the night before, May 1st, is going to be the pasta dinner at the old Armory and new Conley Center. So, that should be a big hit, I would think, and they're going to be doing registrations there as well. So, that being said, a motion to refer back to sponsor.
Thank you.
Five o'clock at the Armory, by the way, for everybody that's interested.
No, okay, okay, on the motion.
On Saturday.
Is it refer back to sponsor, right?
Yes.
On the motion to refer back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred back to sponsor. Clerk will read.
I have a sign and chief.
Okay.
Please suspend the rules and take item number 11.
Motion made in second to take item number 11. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 11, please, so my clerk.
Item number 11 is an order offered by Counsel Jonathan Hannan as president, petition for permanent awning permit for 743 Broadway to recover existing awning at Patriot Insurance.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel DeFlorio?
The petitioner is in the audience, but he did inform me that it's going to be black or white lettering, so if there's any questions, we can invite them up, or whatever this board would.
May I? Counselors, so this gets submitted to my office, this is the color photo. I did pass one around, I didn't realize you didn't get them prior to the meeting, but they are here, and there is one being passed around. It's very clean, it's what you requested, so I made sure that it was something very simple, as you request.
So, if we don't have any questions for the petitioner, I would ask.
We don't know yet, we don't know, because we haven't asked.
Anybody have a?
Well, that's my job, after you're finished, as soon as you're finished.
That's his job.
I said, if nobody has any questions for the petitioner, I.
But then you're supposed to stop talking, see?
Favorable recommendation.
Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, Counsel Polatano?
Thank you. All right, again, it's a very distinctive banner with a red, white, and blue flag behind the background, but is the background of the banner black?
Appears to be.
What color is the banner? I have a problem with that.
Is the petitioner here?
I mean, I.
You can have him come forward.
I mean, I would think with such a distinctive logo that, you know, a neutral color, something a little more.
Yeah, would you like him to come forward?
If we could ask the petitioner to come before us?
Yes, would the petitioner please come forward? Make sure one of those things are turned on. Okay, okay. Sir, would you please state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Paulo Campos, 35 Mystic Street, but this is a seven.
Okay, Counselor.
Forty-two, 743 Broadway.
Okay, Counsel Polatano.
Patriot Insurance.
Okay, I mean, I, and I've always, I've always been a little outspoken about when we've tried to, you know, focus people in on certain colors. But, on the other hand, why a black background? I mean, we're trying to be very upbeat.
Yeah, the problem is we have another business close to our business, is the dark, really dark blue color. So, we'll make dark, black awning. So, the only difference between the businesses, the color of the awning. One building is one awning. So, on the left side, we're going to put black awning, white letters, but the background, the flag, because the logo, that's the logo, the company logo, Patriot Insurance with the logo, that's, that's what we tried to get match with each business.
I mean, I would like to see something a little more uniform with the color than a black, you know, awning. I mean, I understand the logo, and that, because it's such a distinctive logo, and I like the logo, I think it's like either a darker blue or lighter blue might bring it out better, but, you know, the thing is that, again, we're trying, again, to create a vibrant image to the city, and black just doesn't do it.
Yeah, I tried to meet, because the next awning I have on my side is black, it's almost black, it's really, really dark blue.
All right.
If we put lighter color on the left side, we try to get all.
Would a darker blue be a problem?
We can do dark blue, we do black, because all we have inside the store is black, the logo's black and white, everything's black. And the blue we have next door to us is really, really dark blue, it's a leak store, really, really dark blue with white letters.
All right, no, it's just my opinion, I mean, I was, I was, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion with the petitioner? Yes, Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the petitioner. One of the councils were asking you about dark blue. Would you be agreeable to dark blue on the other side, or would you prefer not to do that?
I can't match that, but we can do that, but this is, like I say, if we match exactly the same color, they're going to look like one store, they look like one business.
Are there any other colors that you would be agreeable to, other than the black?
Because we try to match a dark color.
You want to go with the dark color, make the logo stand out?
Dark color, because white letters.
The, next to it, the, whatever the language is on that one, what is on that?
Next door?
Yeah, with the darker blue, how much lettering is on that?
That's a leak store.
How much lettering is on that, do you know?
They don't have much letters, there's only the name of the leak store and white color.
Okay, so if you went with either a similar shade or maybe a shade one way or the other with the logo, all of your information would be able to stand out, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and I know your personal preference would be the black, because otherwise you would have given us a different color, so I get that. And, you know, I do, I do try as much as possible to stay out of the business end and let folks do their business, but with such a contrast, blue and black on it, it might, your logo would stand out, but it might look like an eyesore from the sidewalk when you throw those two together.
Yeah.
And I think that's the concern. If you're agreeable to similar blue, and it would allow for your logo to pop, and your other lettering and everything to work for you, that, you know, I would have no problem doing that. If you're not comfortable with that, then I don't know if you want to think of some other colors that you might prefer over that blue?
Yeah, we can talk, we can talk about, but it's, it's only my concern is one awning.
Right.
Because if you put everything the same color, they're going to look like one store.
Right.
Even their next door, they have white letters, they're going to look like, if you're driving by, you can see like one big awning.
Be a blur, yeah, it looks like a blur to you.
One store, you're going to see like, might you have one business?
Okay.
But, it's truly you have two businesses in the same address.
Okay, and I understand that.
And I don't want to change the frame of the awning, because everything's there.
Now, the other thing that you were saying that concerned me a little bit, you said the interior, everything is, it's with a black and white decor?
Black and white, yeah.
What do you have inside, like, what do you, desks, chairs?
Desk, colors, and walls, all, they have a paint or any black.
Everything is black and white?
Yeah, black and white.
Okay.
Even the business guys are black and white.
Okay, all right, thank you, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin? Oh, was it, was it, I'm sorry, my writing, Counsel Matusky?
Mr. President, I really don't have any questions of this gentleman, so I'll, I'd like to make a statement though on this.
Okay, hold on. Any further questions of the petitioner? Okay, sir, thank you very much for appearing. Counsel Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't know if anybody remembers the awning that was there for like 20 years, with the man with the weightlifter there, was it Nazo Electric, Mechanical? I mean, if you're talking ugly, that was probably the ugliest awning in the city, and it was there for 25 years. Here's a man that's, you know, black and white is classy, Mr. President. We just opened up, you know where Phyllis's Diner is, take a look at the black and white beautiful awning down on Lower Broadway, where there's a tattoo, parlor, and a beautiful barber shop, first-class operation, black and white awning. I mean, we're, you're talking about an ugly look, I wish they had a picture of the other one that was there, you talk about ugly. But, Mr. President, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, this is America, you know, and I've never talked about this issue in the past. We're worried about colors of awnings? I mean, you know, the fluorescent colors are a little over the top, but black and white is a standard, traditional classy, I mean, I wish more people would do black and white, to be honest with you, but that's, like the councilman said, that's his preference. This man is doing this property over, he doesn't want to be connected to the store next door. I think Oliver has bought the property, that great restaurant in Glendale Square. I mean, let the guy do what he wants to do with an awning, I mean, we're worried about colors of awnings. I don't get it, you know, and I'm not talking about the people that spoke prior here, I'm going back to a couple of years ago, this was like a two-hour subject matter appear. I'm not concerned about a color of an awning unless it's over the top, and that means fluorescent colors and, but nothing was worse than that. You talk about tacky, that was the ugliest awning. I mean, I could go around Everett and tell, there's ripped awnings, I mean, you've got to keep these things in shape. This guy is actually building them in Everett on Mystic Street down the line, he's a businessman here, I mean, I'm sure you're going to do a good job, you seem like you know what you're doing. But anyway, that's just my feeling, if we're worried about colors of awnings, anything was better than was there, that's my opinion. I used to ride by that, you'd be sitting at the light, you look to the left, I thought it was a weightlifting club or something, and it's an electrical outlet thing, I don't know. Maybe it's me, but I'm not worried about the colors of awnings. You know, class is class, black and white has always been a classy thing. Take a look at what they did at Phyllis's Diner when you go by there, you'll see what a nice-looking black and white awning looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can understand the concerns of my colleagues trying to make it blue like next door, but I believe the reason why they did it black is because of the flag. If it did navy blue, it wouldn't show up, so it's a nice, clean look, he doesn't have a lot of writing on it, I'm definitely in favor of it. I mean, we, you know, I thank you for coming to our city and bringing us business, I appreciate it, so I'm definitely in favor.
Counsel Seminelli? Yes.
Just a comment, a question really, why are we getting away from crimson signage, which was a uniform color that the council members have agreed on as a nonofficial agreement? Not seems to be working, and that's just a comment. A black, there's no flag, black and the flag is, can be somewhat disrespectful.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, I think our assistant clerk has some information about the rule regarding awnings, is it?
Yes. I'm sorry, so it's not an ordinance, it is a council rule. You voted on this a few years back. The color of the awning is supposed to be crimson red in color, unless otherwise approved by the city council, so you are allowed to approve other. This gentleman or I think one of his partners came to us when this came about, he asked us what, you know, he wanted to do. We did tell him that crimson red is the city color, it's the color that we prefer in awnings, but historically, over the past few years, almost none of the awnings you have approved have been crimson red. So, what we did request, that if you was going to use something other than crimson, is to make it clean, use as little, you know, as little words as possible, if you saw the awning before, it is just jumbled with words, you don't even know what that store was. Clean, concise, and you have been approving them. So, I did tell him it was crimson red, but they, you do approve other colors, so that's why he went with the black probably, I didn't, and if you do approve this, you will have to suspend Council Rule 74, just so you know.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Capone?
Mr. President, after, after talking to him again, I do try to be as flexible as possible with the business community. The concern I have is that the interior of his building is consistent with the signs, so in that regard, I'll be voting in favor of it, and I would move that we suspend Rule 74.
Second, a motion in favorable action on the order.
Take one motion at a time. Motion made in second to suspend Rule 74, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Seminelli is opposed? Okay. Okay, a favorable action on the order? Most made second favorable action, clerk will call the roll.
Okay, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
No.
And President Hanlon?
No.
Ten yeas, one nay, you have passed the order.
Two nays, I vote no.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
The petition has been granted?
Nine yeas, nine yeas, two nays.
Clerk will read next item on calendar, on the agenda.
Yes.
Which I think is.
I think we're reverting back to the regular order, correct?
Number two.
Item number two is an order to accept a donation of $20 from Benjamin Seiya to the to the Human Services Emergency Services Program to be deposited into the Office of Human Services Donation Accounts.
Favorable action, Mr. President, a letter of thanks be sent to Mr. Seiya.
Second motion. Motion made in second to, for favorable action and to send a letter. All in favor, answer the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
President Hanlon?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Eleven yeas, you have passed the order. Item three on the agenda.
Item number three is to appoint Bernard Evans to the Disability Commission for a three-year term expiring March 2019.
Favorable action on the order?
Suspend Rule 20, please.
Which rule?
Rule 20.
Second. Motion made in second to suspend Rule 20, any discussion, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule 20 has been suspended on the motion.
Favorable action.
Motion made in second, favorable action, any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Okay, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Hanlon?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item number four on the agenda.
Item number...
Mr. President, if may, through you, to the clerk, Mr. Cornelio, is all this in order? Is everything, any issues with any of these, these all renewals?
They are all renewals, and anytime we put something before you, I only put it before you unless it is all in order, otherwise it stays off the calendar, just so you know.
Okay, being that said, thank you for that. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we take items four through 10 collectively in favorable action.
Second motion. Motion made in second to take items four through 10 collectively and for favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing done, these are all orders, clerk will call the roll.
Yep. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Are we going to read what they are?
Four through 10.
Yes, Counsel, that was my mistake.
Thank you.
Sorry. Item four through 10 are taken collectively. Item four is a petition for second-hand dealer's license from VSM Services, Inc. at 539 Ferry Street. Item number five, petition for second-hand antique and precious metals license for Wentworth Precious Metals LLC at 421 Second Street. Item six, petition for junk dealer license for Wentworth Precious Metals LLC at 421 Second Street. Item number seven, petition for junk collector's license from Carlisle Precious Metals LLC at 2-24 Dexter Street. Item number eight, petition for junk dealer license from Carlisle Precious Metals LLC at 2-24 Dexter Street. Item number nine, petition for second-hand antique and precious metals license from Carlisle Precious Metals LLC at 2-24 Dexter Street. And item number 10 is petition for second-hand slash precious metals license from Julie Exchange New England Precious Metals at 2076 Revere Beach Parkway.
On the motion for favorable action, it was properly seconded, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of all the items four through 10, signify, be entering the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero? Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Hanlon?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, all, seven orders have passed.
We did 12.
We're at 13, Mr. President.
Number 14 on the agenda, please.
Mr. President, I believe we're at 13.
Yes, we are. Clerk will read item number 13.
Item number 13, communication from Chief Financial Officer, City Auditor regarding the annual financial statement audit. The copies are on your desk.
Accept the communication, it's on file, and favorable action.
Motion for favorable action, accept the communication and for favorable action, it's just to be placed on file, I guess. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have accepted and you have placed on file. Does he want to come up forward? Item 13? Okay. Are we on item 13?
Yes, item number 13, looks like the city auditor's in the audience.
Make a motion for the city auditor to come before us. Motion made in second for the city auditor to come before us, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move, sir, you are on your way. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Eric Demus, CFO, City Auditor.
Did you want to make a statement?
The reason for the communication is per city charter. It is the city council's responsibility to appoint the independent outside auditing firm to complete the annual audit. Per city charter, the city council needs to do this by September, following the close of the fiscal year. I wanted in this communication to make a recommendation to accelerate that process, and for the city council to appoint, in this case, reappoint the existing independent audit firm of Powers and Sullivan, and to do that sooner rather than later, so that we can begin this process.
Counsel Capone.
President, through you to the city auditor. How many years has Powers and Sullivan been doing it for the city of Everett?
They have just completed their third audit. Prior to that, it was another auditing firm that I believe had been here about 10 years. Prior to that, Powers and Sullivan was the city's independent audit firm for a number of years, I'm not certain how long.
Okay. And would you recommend, obviously, when you have something that's, that works, you don't need to go and fix it, but would you recommend from time to time that you do bounce around to different sets of eyes to review books, et cetera?
I would, actually.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no other questions.
Any further questions? If I may, from the chair, could I ask a question? If this is going to be starting now rather than September, do we offset the entire cycle from here on in?
You do not.
And will we?
You do not and you will not be upsetting this cycle. Typically, a municipal financial statement audit happens before the fiscal year is closed, so that the audit firm can go forward and start a lot of the heavy lifting, a lot of the transactional testing. And that's typically done before the close of the fiscal year. One of the issues that the city faces is that, as part of our annual financial statement audit, the city prepares a comprehensive annual financial report. Part of that report includes the independent auditor's report. We submit that to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, to be graded in comparison with other communities throughout the United States. That report is due by December 31st of the close of the previous fiscal year. If you were to appoint independent auditors to start from mid-September or thereafter, we would not be able to meet those obligations and those reporting requirements.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion, excuse me, thank you so very much. On the communication? Motion made in second, place the communication on file, acceptance, communication on file. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Now, item 14.
Item number 14 is a Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Report on Resolution Offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon to Have the Health Department, City Services, and Cemetery Representatives appear at the Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Meeting to figure out what needs to be done to cure the rat problem on McKinley Street and the elderly center dumpster at Dunkin' Donuts on Broadway as there have been numerous complaints by residents.
Accept Committee Report, place on file. Second. Motion made, accept the Committee Report, and to refer to Government Operations? Is that what it was? No, place on file? Place on file, yep. Yes, item 14, okay. Motion made to accept the Committee Report and place on file, all in favor? All opposed, so move.
Also, I would like a report back from ISD in one month.
Second motion.
Is that item 14? Yes. So the motion was to place on file, to refer to the ISD?
No, the motion was to place on file.
And?
And then...
Someone said place on file?
I did.
Okay, but you don't want to do that?
Why not?
You want to refer it?
Well, in the committee, it's not written here. Mr. President, it's not written here, that I requested in the committee that this report be back before us in one month with ISD reporting on the, on that. But it wasn't, was not part of this body, so I'm adding that.
Okay, got it, okay. Motion made to accept the Committee Report, place the Committee Report on file, and also to refer to ISD.
And report back within one month.
One month, okay.
It specifically says the June meeting in your committee report, just so you know.
Yes.
So motion to accept the Committee Report, place on file, and refer to ISD, and with report in two more meetings, I guess that would be, a month's time, a month's time. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Clerk will read item 15 on the agenda.
Item number 15 is a Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Report on Order Offered by John F. Hanlon as President to Amend the Complete Streets Resolution Adopted by the City Council on March 10, 2014, as to make the city eligible for mass DOT grant funding in FY '17.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Motion made in second, accept the Committee Report, all in favor? Aye, all opposed, so move. Counsel McKinnon?
Mr. President, where would you like this to go? Would you like this to go back into committee, or do you want it...
This is, this is as president, this wasn't my resolution.
Okay. We'll send this into... Yeah, could you read the committee report?
The committee report voted to report back to the city council with the recommendation for favorable action.
Okay. Favorable action.
Second.
Motion made in second for favorable action, any further discussion on the order? Is this an order? An order. Any further discussion on the order, hearing done, all in favor, will answer the roll call.
We have Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Hanlon?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Clerk will read item 16.
Item number 16 is a Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Report on Resolution Offered by Counselor Michael McLaughlin to Invite the Chief of Police to a March Meeting of Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service for an Update Regarding Steps Being Taken Before the Opening of Wynn Everett.
Motion to accept the Committee Report, anybody?
Motion to accept the Committee Report.
Motion made in second, accept the Committee Report, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And what, what was read? Could you read what was read on that?
Committee voted to grant further time until the month of June and invite the mayor, police chief, patrolman union, and Representative Wynn Bosenhaba to that meeting.
So move.
Motion made in second, favorable action, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Okay, clerk will read item 17.
Item number 17 is a Committee on Government Ops, Public Safety, and Public Service Report on Resolution Offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon to Invite the Building Department, Assessors' Office, City Engineer Julius O'Furee to the Government Operations, Safety, and Service Committee Meeting to Explain Why There Are Properties Throughout the City that are being sent tax bills sent to them with different addresses on their mailed copies than their number of their street.
Accept Committee Report.
Motion made in second, accept the Committee Report, all in favor? All opposed, you have accepted Committee Report on the Committee Report.
Could you please read the Committee Report?
Is also to refer to the June meeting.
Thank you. And there should be a, it was, I think they requested 45 days to create a letter?
It said the month of June, so I think they were saying the middle of June, which would give you the 45 days.
Okay, thank you very much.
And it's City Solicitor and Bill O'Rourke for that meeting.
Thank you.
Counsel?
That'll go to the June meeting, it'll be held over in...
Motion made in second, to refer this item to the June meeting, first or second?
First.
First, your meeting in June, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred to the first meeting in June. Counsel Reed, I mean, the clerk will read item number 18.
Item number 18 is a Committee on Government Ops, Public Safety, and Public Service Report on Resolution Offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano that the administration considered through community development to set aside funds from the Wynn Project when received to assist property owners in Everett Square in converting unusable business, second and third-floor spaces to residential. This would add an additional residential element to the square while changing the tax base on those properties to a mixed use.
Accept Committee Report.
Motion made and second to accept the Committee Report, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move.
I'd like to refer this to the mayor's office and community development for response back on June 13th.
Coming back when?
June 13th.
June 13th. Motion made in second, refer this to the mayor and community development, have a report back by June 13th, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Clerk will read item 19 on the agenda. When you finish, this is shot here.
Item number 19, Committee on Community and Business Development Report on Order Offered by Counselors Anthony DePero and Rosa DeFlorio that the city enact a moratorium on the issuance of lodging house licenses until some new restrictions are in place, such as the location of property in regard to its proximity to schools, et cetera.
Accept the Committee Report.
Motion made and seconded to accept the Committee Report, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have accepted Committee Report.
And we have made a recommendation to keep this in committee.
Until? Do you want to date, or just refer back to the committee?
Refer back to the committee.
Okay, motion made in second to refer back to the committee. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. You have referred back to committee. Item number twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one is a committee on government ops, public safety, public service report offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon to discuss the West Nile and New Zika virus outbreak and to also inquire as to any data of where this is spreading and if there are any known cases of people traveling in and out of the United States.
Accept committee report.
Motion made second to accept the committee report, all in favor? All opposed, so moved, you have seconded committee report.
Can we read the committee report?
Yes, we may. The recommendation to grant further time with a request that the health director to be invited the next meeting with a further request that the health director provide statistics on known cases in the city of Everett and state of Massachusetts.
Thank you. Refer it to the next, refer that to the next meeting on government operations. Yes.
Motion second, motion made and second to refer back to the committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred. Clerk will read item. Twenty-seven?
Twenty-three, Mr. President.
Twenty-seven? Yeah. No.
Twenty-three then twenty-four, yeah, we have a few. Item number twenty-three is an order offered by Counsel John F. Haley as president that the city council of the city of Everett hereby accepts chapter fifty-one, section sixteen A of the Massachusetts general laws creating an election commission in the city of Everett.
Favorable action on the motion? Okay, motion made for favorable action and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought we were going to get some information as to, you know, what the pay was and how long the term of these offices would be. Wasn't that supposed to happen?
No, that's all set by the administration.
It's all set, okay, well.
I think the pay will be up to the, up to his honor of the mayor and the terms will probably be, you know, staggered three-year terms.
Okay, well, you know, as I stated in the past about this new election commission, I like the way the city clerk handles things, maybe I'm old fashioned. I like the way the city clerk's office handles the affairs. I, I'm not sure if this election commission will be actually involved, you know, I, I, people registering people to vote, that's a good thing. I'm in favor of that. Awareness of Election Day, I'm in favor of that. But to take it away from the city clerk's domain, I have a little issue there. And I'm just a little, you know, if something's been working well for many years, if they need an extra employee, I'm in favor of hiring somebody for this department to actually, you know, take the stress off of our city clerk. But I don't think I'm going to support this with the new encompassing roles that this commission will take. They're taking things away from the city clerk's office. For instance, who's going to pull the ballot on your placement of the ballot? I was very fortunate last year. You know, there's just so much that, you know, and then, you know, and it occurs up here, Mr. President, that occasionally we'll ask a question and the charter, you know, it's really this charter thing. Nobody really knows the answer, but, you know, I'm going along with it for now till I really get my gears going here. You know, I'll go along with, well, that was the old counsel about under suspension. It just, a lot of rules that really are in the charter, because I've looked at the charter. And I can see rules changing here and there and, you know, I'm easy to get along with, that's my nature, but this scares me a little and I'm going to vote no, thanks.
Counsel. I'm sorry, whose hand went up? Oh, Counsel McGlaughlin.
I would also echo the comments of Counsel Large Matuski. I have some serious concerns about this elections commission and the functions that they're going to operate, how it's going to play out. I guess trying something new isn't, isn't a bad thing, but I do have some serious concerns about it and I, some questions that still are not clear to me of how this is all going to play out, but I guess we will see how this plays out. And I hope that it works as good as our city clerk is attesting to that it is going to, but I do have hesitation on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel, that's all of you. I saw, saw a couple of hands up there. Counsel Napolitano.
Thank you. And again, I understand the concerns here, but we're taking stuff away from the, the city clerk. But keep in mind, this is initiated by the city clerk. This is a call for help. There's changes. He's determined that the, the existing structure of his department is not going to be able to handle those changes, those changes without the added stress. And this isn't something that we can just throw money at. He made that quite clear at our last meeting and I, I still support this, I still believe this is the way to go. If we truly respect the city clerk's opinion for all the goodwill and all the good work he's done for us, then his recommendation that this is the direction to go, I'm fine with that. And I, and I'm, and I'm prepared to vote in that, in that direction. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
On item number twenty-three, Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
No.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yes.
And President Haley.
Yes.
We have six yays, five nays. You have passed the order.
Do we need a, Mr. Chairman, call for more than a majority?
That's a great question for our city solicitor. I believe, I believe he, I believe the clerk said he just needed a majority, but I, I'd rather, I'd rather get a ruling just, just in case.
The clerk of committees is right next to you.
Yeah. Wait, but, but I, I, you know, that's up to you, you're the counsel, you can.
Can we have the city solicitor come before us, please? Would you please come over? Counsel Mayor? Attorney Mayor? Solicitor Mayor? Please name and address.
Good evening, Colleen Mahia, city solicitor.
Okay.
What was the question?
The question was, this is on accepting chapter fifty-one, section sixteen A to make a election commission?
Yep.
Is this by majority vote?
Adopting a statute, I believe it's, it's a majority. I can, I can look at your, I think your charter explains it.
Yeah, she stated that it was a majority, but Counsel.
Counsel McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the solicitor. Even if it has paid, paid position, so it would be, that's fair to say that it's a majority?
Yeah, because you're not voting on the, on any appropriation.
Okay.
You're voting on just adopting the commission.
Okay. Just checking. So, okay.
Thank you very much, okay. Excuse the customary thanks.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just, I just want to, if I could, you said you believe, are you looking it up as we speak? I'd like to actually know if, whether she believes it's true or not. I just want to know what the charter says, you know, the charter? Let's get the correct answer before we dismiss her, is that's okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Continue with the meeting, just lay this on the table.
Yeah, just make a motion to lay this on the table.
Just make a motion to lay this on the table until the solicitor has an answer for it.
Oh, hold on, hold on, before we take that motion. Solicitor?
There's nothing in the charter that tells you that you have to have more than a majority for adopting a statute.
So the majority passes this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions of the solicitor?
Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you very much. So the motion, I mean, the vote was six to five, motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, to call for reconsideration on this, on the twenty-three in hopes that it fails.
Okay, don't have a second. Motion made second for reconsideration on item number twenty-three. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
No.
Counsel Mangan.
No.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
No.
Counsel Semenelli.
No.
And President Haley.
No.
So we have five yays, six nos, reconsideration.
Item is passed as, as proposed. Clerk will read item twenty-four.
Sorry. Item number twenty-four is a resolution offered by Counsel Fred Capone and Counselor John Leo McKinnon that the city auditor provide an itemized breakdown of all disbursements expenditures incurred to date by the city of Everett in anticipation and/or infurtherance of activities related to the Wynn Boston Harbor project formerly Wynn Everett. In addition, the city auditor is requested to provide an itemized, an itemization of all funds received from Wynn Boston Harbor and to specifically identify which receipts are reimbursements of expenses incurred by the city.
Do you have a motion to request for city auditor?
Yeah.
Motion made second, all in favor? Aye, with the auditor, please come forward. And Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to city auditor. I, we talked real quick on the way up and, and you had mentioned that you had some information. I, I know that it was a tall order, but I figured, as long as I've known you, you're efficient and capable, so it doesn't surprise me that you do have your thumb on it. So we'll take a peek at what it is. And if you wouldn't mind giving an overview to the council as to what's on the paper? I haven't seen it yet, so I'm just wondering.
Certainly, thank you. What I was able to provide was a breakdown regarding any financial activity relating to the, the Wynn Boston Everett and prior to that, the Wynn Boston Harbor and prior to that, Wynn Everett project. Prior to the city executing the community host agreement, all of the financial activity was controlled and managed by the state gaming commission. Once the city executed the community host agreement, the city took on all the responsibilities of administering these financial, financial activities. Based upon the request, what I have done and what I have presented to you tonight is a breakdown of activity that happened prior to the host community agreement being signed and where we are today. The first line is titled state grants. The funding source here was the Mass Gaming Commission. So any of the financial activities that were reporting underneath this line has happened all through the Mass Gaming Commission. So any funding for these activities that was funded through Wynn was provided directly to the Mass Gaming Commission and then through them to us. The reason why I have the fiscal year of two thousand thirteen through two thousand and sixteen is that the city converted their financial software approximately in fiscal thirteen. As such, I'm having difficulty trying to go back and get additional detail. The community host agreement was signed sometime, I believe, in, in either fourteen or fifteen. However, the reason why I'm saying the activity goes through two thousand and sixteen is because the Mass Gaming Commission actually conducted their own internal audit of all of the funds that were dispersed to the city and were expended. That audit and grant were, was conducted and closed approximately in January of this year. So there was some related activity and the city returned some unused grant funds. So I did have disbursements that went through the current fiscal year dealing with the gaming commission. We received approximately five hundred and seventy-one thousand and expended five hundred and forty-five thousand. There's a balance of approximately twenty-six thousand dollars related to some of that grant money that we still have yet to return. We had to wait for the completion of the final audit to be done. We then move on to the current year. As you recall, the city council was asked to appropriate eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. This is money that the city received directly from Wynn under the terms of the community host agreement. We received a hundred percent of those funds. The city council authorized the appropriation. The city entered into a contract with a company called Fourleaf that is assisting us in the consulting project. And to date, out of that appropriation, we have spent eighty-seven thousand dollars. I've also included, for the sake of transparency, as part of the fiscal seventeen-year budget that we're going to be, the mayor's office will be presenting to city council. The contract with Wynn, with Fourleaf through Wynn is going to be approximately one point three million dollars. So we're in the process of working with the Wynn, the Wynn group to make that request. We will be, unlike the eight hundred and forty-three thousand, we're going to be including that number in the actual operating budget and then include the same amount as a revenue source so that we don't have to go through city council as part of a free cash appropriation. Now that we have an understanding exactly as to how this process is going to work, we're going to include all of this activity directly in the operating budgets that are going to be submitted to city council. Just recently, the city had received a check from Wynn for eighty-nine hundred dollars. This was different to, than the permitting process because this fell underneath an existing Massachusetts, Massachusetts state statute, fifty-three G. And basically it deals with a peer review process that is being handled by the planning board. Because there is a specific statute that accounts for or provides guidance on how to account for this type of financial activity, in this case, it's directed by the planning board. We included this money in a separate revolving fund that's outside of city council appropriation. We are currently in the process, the final two lines, we are currently in the process of discussions with Wynn about funding some direct expenditures that the city has been paying for through our normal operating budget as well as indirect costs such as costs incurred from various offices such as assessing, with assessing dealing with various issues. The finance office, my department, the legal department and the planning department and inspectional services department. So we're still in the process of formulating those actual costs. As of date, we have come across two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars that we're proposing to Wynn are costs that weren't, the city is incurring but has yet, yet not received during fiscal sixteen. During that process, we've already started put together what we anticipate our costs to be for fiscal seventeen. And fiscal seventeen, we're anticipating that the city is going to be incurring costs of six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. All of this, we will be submitting to Wynn for reimbursement. However, what we're trying to do is include this in the annual operating budget so that we're accounting for things where we would normally account for this type of activity had it not been this type of unique transaction.
You still have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for the information, I really do appreciate it. A couple of quick follow-ups on this. On the first line with regards to the grants, there's roughly about twenty-six thousand dollars left over. Is that money that is required to be turned back or do we have other expenditures that we're assuming are going to take up the balance of those funds?
There are no additional expenditures that we would be authorized to charge to those funds. We were actually, the city received the, the grant funds in advance, it wasn't a reimbursement-based grant. So the money that we received was a budgeted amount that the Mass Gaming Commission thought that we would be spending. As such, we didn't spend the money, we, the city only spent money based upon authorized expenditures. We fell below the budget and as such, we're going to be returning those funds.
Okay. And with regards to the projected expenditures going forward, how does that work? Basically, if I have it correctly, we're putting it into the operational budget so that we can fund it and then at some point in time, we'll be requesting Wynn for that. What's the timeframe on that? Is it quarterly, semi-annually, annually? As receipts come in, expenditures rather, as they're available, to request it then? What, what's the process, just so that I and my colleagues can understand that?
I haven't been directly involved in that process and we're still working out that process. So, you know, we've already incurred costs during fiscal sixteen, so the goal would be actually to request, to request this, to request Wynn to be reimbursing us before we actually spent the money so that the city's not actually funding it. Given this process is new and it's ongoing, we're, we're negotiating sixteen, but we're also negotiating seventeen as well as we're putting the budget together. So what we're doing for sixteen is not necessarily what we would be doing for fiscal seventeen and moving forward. We're actually developing the process as, as we're ongoing and trying to be more reactive, proactive right now.
And I appreciate that, because that, that was my concern. It would, you know, the, Mr., Wynn and, Wynn Industries doesn't need the city of Everett to, to bankroll them, they're, they're okay on their own. So I just wanted to make sure that we're recouping whatever we're expending out as quickly as possible. So that's, I was just trying to figure out what the timeframe of turnaround is. And I understand it's a work in progress to some extent. And I don't want to put you on the spot with anything that you're not prepared for, but from your point of view, going forward in two thousand seventeen, we come up with a, you know, an anticipated number, put it out there. How would that work? Would they be making that payment to the city upfront? We'd hold it? If there was a surplus, it would be returned? If there was a shortage, we'd reach out to them? How, how would that process work?
This has been a learning process and we're still developing and formulating that process. So it, it, it's not possible for me to answer that question tonight.
What would your recommendation be on something like that, if that's not too far out? If it is, you know, if you're not prepared to answer that, don't. But from your point of view as city auditor, what would your, I guess, best-case scenario, what would you be recommending to the city in terms of how to, if that's not an unfair question to you?
I'm not, I'm not actually able to answer that question. What I can tell you is that this activity, my goal would be to do as much planning and advanced work that we can in advance so that both parties are in agreement as to how we're going to move forward and what the parameters of moving forward are going to be.
Okay.
And, and that's clearly what we're working to. What we end up with, I, I'm just not sure. It's, it's still early in the process.
No, and I understand that, I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the numbers and they are lumped. How, how difficult would it be for you for an itemized breakdown? And that could be at any time, it doesn't have to be any time soon, but is that tremendous lifting on your end?
It would be very easy for all of the rows except for the very first one. The, all the activity that flowed through the Mass Gaming Commission, again, that was under a different software. I'm having actual issues with that vendor from our former software company and trying to gain access. As of right now, I can't provide you that detailed information. At some point, I should be able to. I'm in the process of working on that with a former software company because not just for this particular request, I want to be able to have historical information on other areas as we move forward. As to when I'm going to be able to work those bugs out with a former software company, I couldn't anticipate at this time.
And I appreciate that. And when the time comes when you are able to break that out, I'd appreciate if, if you could just get a copy of that to all my colleagues. And there's no need to pull you back up. I appreciate all the work that was done on this, but when we get to the point where we do have that itemization, if you could make that available to the council, I would greatly appreciate it.
I would be happy to provide that.
Thank you so much, I have no other questions, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel, Counsel McKinnon.
Be a Mr. President to the CFO. In echoing my colleague from Ward One, it's just as long as we can get some sort of updates, itemization, that would be great. I want to thank you too during budget season, you coming up with this stuff, so. I know it must have been a little bit of a task with both items going on at once, but I apologize for that. There was, the reason why the itemization would be key is because we would like to know, there were certain things that were done and certain positions that were created and I don't see them here, just see the lump sum figures. So, I mean, there was a gaming commissioner that was put into play and I don't know where we had paid a certain amount or not. So I'd like to see that itemization of it all, you know? And if that position still exists and who's in that position and also what the payment of that position would be. So, there's a couple of things. The recouping of the funds for two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, that's ongoing? That's what you said?
It is ongoing, yes.
Okay. When will we be actually seeing some type of funds returned from them? Do you know?
I could not speculate as to when. I could not speculate as to when we're going to reach an agreement.
Okay. Now, we will be recouped for a majority of this, or partial listings of this, or how would that go? Are we asking for it all back, or?
I'm anticipating that we're going to receive all costs that the city has incurred as part of this process back.
Okay. And that's what we're asking for, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And let me see. Now, when, do you know when we will be receiving any additional funding? I know they started construction on the site down there, and I don't know if we're going to be getting any type of funding from that, or when are they going to start again? Or is this ongoing still with the talks?
It's ongoing, but it doesn't have anything to do with the talks per the community host agreement. Once the city issues a building permit, which the city has not yet issued, we're very close to issuing that. There are a few regulatory issues that we're still working out. Once that found, once that permit has been issued, within 30 days from the issuance of that permit, the city will be receiving its first payment of $5 million.
Okay. So it'll come in $5 million, that's the first payment. All right. Thank you very much. If you could just keep us updated, and if we could get the itemized information, that would be great. Thank you very much for appearing tonight.
Any further questions? Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want, we're talking about the Wynn casinos, so I don't see our city clerk here, but about six weeks ago, we asked for a letter to be sent to the Mass Gaming Commission, the mayor of Somerville, Somerville City Council, and the Wynn Group. And I did leave a message with the city clerk a week or two ago to ask what has actually become of that whole deal. We were supposed to get a press release to our local three papers and a copy of this letter stating that we very much oppose as to what the Somerville mayor is doing. We're, can we ask the city clerk?
We did get, I get copies of that letter anyway.
Oh, how come we didn't receive them?
I don't know. I got it on my computer.
We received an email. Okay, I want a physical copy in my mailbox, okay? I'm requesting that. I mean, I don't get this yet. Where's the press release in the newspaper?
That I don't know.
That's going to be an email, too?
Don't know.
Come on.
Counsel, we can only report on what we know. Other things, we don't know about, so.
Mr. President, it was explicitly said that we want a physical copy of that letter in our mailboxes at the meeting. It was also said that the people of Everett should know that their city council is fighting the Somerville roadblock on this casino issue. And maybe it's me, I want a physical copy of it. People are asking me all the time, Mr. President.
I have no objections with that.
No, I understand that. I just want to say it's a little frustrating to say, well, it's on the email. That doesn't help me here. That's not helping me. We specifically asked, and I did leave a message, it's not like I'm not reaching out here, with the city clerk as to where we're at with this. I would request a physical. Is anybody else here, people asking what's going on with the casino?
The first one so far.
Mr. Chairman, all due respect, and I share the council's concerns, but this is not germane to the item.
We're talking about the casino.
The item has to do with spending money with the casino.
The president has jurisdiction as to what has, you know, I ask as a courtesy. And, you know, it's on the casino issue, and I'm not, I just want to know if we got the, you got a copy of it in your email.
I'll get you a copy.
All right. Well, that's what we were supposed to do. I mean, I'm not asking, this was said at the committee, Mr. President, and where's the press release to go along with it? Okay? Could you look into that for me?
I have no idea. But I'll find out about your copy going through.
In the press release.
And I'll find out about a press release. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this piece, I would like to extend a thanks again to the city auditor's office. It was a lot of work, and I do appreciate him turning it around so quickly. On the piece itself, I'd like to refer back to sponsor.
Motion made second to refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move you have referred back to sponsor. We are now on 25.
Item number 25 is an ordinance offered by councils Rosa DeFlorio, Leo McKinnon, Mike Mengen, Mike McGlaughlin, Richard Delasola, Wayne Matuski, and Anthony DePiero, that the salary for all members of the city council shall be $25,000 annually effective January 1, 2018. All members of the city council shall receive a 2% increase in the annual salary beginning on the first day of each calendar year and ending in an even number effective January 1, 2020.
Fable action on the audit.
On the audit, I think that has to be changed to 2017. I think our rules say that if there's any increase, it shall become effective the next following, next January.
No, it's the next election year.
No, it's the next.
Am I right or wrong?
No.
So 2018.
It says, yeah, legislative cycle.
All right. I was just talking to somebody. Okay. So on the audit, a fable action, second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, answer the roll call.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mengen.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
No.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Hanlon.
No.
We have eight yeas, three nays.
Eight yeas, three nays, you pass the ordinance. Clerk will read item 26.
Item number 26 is an ordinance offered by councils Rosa DeFlorio, Leo McKinnon, Mike Mengen, Mike McGlaughlin, Richard Delasola, Wayne Matuski, and Anthony DePiero, the salary for the position of mayor shall be $138,000 annually effective January 1, 2018.
Fable action.
Second.
Motion made second for fable action. Any further discussion? Hearing on, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mengen.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
No.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Hanlon.
Yes.
We have nine yeas, two nays. You have enrolled.
Nine to two, you have passed the ordinance. Clerk will read item number 27.
Item number 27 is a resolution offered by councilor John Leo McKinnon, Fred Capone, that our state representative sponsor a bill to the effect that any individual caught with a large amount of narcotics shall be charged with intent to distribute as a result of said amount and shall face mandatory imprisonment for 20 years.
Mr. President, on the motion, I'd like to amend this by adding Councilman Matuski. He'd like to be added to it.
Motion made second to, in addition, an additional sponsor, Counsel Matuski.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. On the resolution itself.
I'm going to refer this to legislative committee. And ask that both sponsors, all three sponsors be invited.
I understand the state is doing something on it. You might ask them if they would send that, what's going on, back to you.
Mr. President, through you. I know that there was just legislation that was passed through the governor's office. I know that there's also a piece going to be coming out of the legislative branch. I don't know if it actually gets into the sentencing aspect of it, but this is what we're looking, we're looking to strengthen the existing one, the existing law that's there now. So that's, that's why we would ask that. So that's what we're going to, we're going to try to do, is push it to our state rep and also to our senator and see if they could actually get this passed through.
Okay. So motion would be to refer to our state representatives and ask for the.